Good afternoon. This committee on appropriations, public debt, appropriate legal affairs, retirement, public parks recreation, historic preservation of land will not come to order. We have two items on today's agenda. One is Bill 396 introduced by Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and the other is a confirmation hearing. Inasmuch as the hospital is still here, we'll start with the hospital and Bill 396. I will allow the author of the legislation the opportunity to give a brief overview.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. Vice Speaker, and thank you for having a public hearing on this bill. Bill 396 is pretty simple. It appropriates $1.4 million, almost $1.5 million, to GMH from the fiscal year 2015 budget that we had just passed. And it funds the increments that are owed to GMH employees from pay period October 1st, 2012, to 7/17/2013. And so, you know, when the government has moved into a direction where we're making whole employees throughout the government of Guam, you know, a lot of times we see where these employees at the hospital are put in the back burners. And so, we want to, you know, number one, reverse that trend, and number two, ensure that there's funding available to make that happen. And so, this does not unbalance the budget, the fiscal 2015 budget of Governor Guam. The money that we are using to pay the increments of the hospital comes from a fund that was created to hire new people in this government and to grow our government. So, you know, we must first make whole existing employees before we bring in other employees. And sure, there may be legitimate reasons to bring in new employees throughout the government of Guam, but I think it's really offensive to our existing employees, not just to GMH, but to our existing public employees across the board, that we're leaving some behind and not making whole the others who need to be made whole. And so, that's what this legislation is. It's to pay overdue increments. I know that there was some discussion about bonuses as well, merit bonuses. However, the Board of Trustees of the hospital had adopted a resolution that only approved merit bonuses, I believe, for three years. And so, that's something that we can ask the officials later on in this hearing. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman Rodriguez. We have three people that have signed up. Ms. June Perez, Ms. Belle Rada, and Percy Piani. And Alan Ulrich. You don't need to sign in. Don't worry about it. Just go ahead. If you're going to testify, testify. Are the other two going to be providing testimony or just? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Senators, Vice Speaker. Certainly, we appreciate the bill that will allow GMH to make due to its valuable employees for the services that they rendered. And with the governor's executive order to lift the freeze in May of 2013, we were unable to meet all of the obligation of the spirit of that law. And so, we have had the $1.5 million outstanding since that time. We actually made the payment for 2012 and part of the merit bonuses, as you pointed out, in November of 2013. But the balance, $1.5 million, that you point out from October through July of 2013 is still outstanding. We appreciate the services of our employees and believe that, you know, that this bill will help to compensate them. And they've been very patient waiting for it. So, we appreciate the legislature considering that. And we'll let the legislature work with, you know, as far as identifying the funding source. But from our standpoint, we are just applauding the fact that we are getting those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ulrich. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Hafaday. My name is June Perez. I'm a registered voter in Timouning and wear many hats at GMH. I'm here to deliver some signatures. But before I do that, I would just like to comment on the previous hearing on the office.
Keep it to this and just present your testimony on this bill.
Just this one?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry. Okay. "We, the undersigned, Guam Memorial Hospital Authority employees and families, friends, and supporters of GMH employees petition the 32nd Guam Legislature, Senators, and the Governor of Guam to approve Bill 396-32 introduced by Senator Dennis Rodriguez Jr. and act to make whole the obligations to the employees of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority by appropriating the $1.5 million or whatever is needed to make whole the employees of the Guam Memorial Hospital to pay overdue increments from 2012 to 2013 by amending the public law mentioned. The dedicated and hard-working GMHA employees make tremendous sacrifices 24 hours a day, every day of the year, as they dutifully fulfill GMH's mission to provide quality patient care in a safe environment to the people of Guam. These GMH employees deserve their hard-earned pay. Therefore, we respectfully request that all GMH employees be made whole with the payment of their overdue increments by the immediate approval of Bill 396-32." And with this, I have about 597 signatures of employees, their families, friends, and other supporters of the hospital. And we just started. This is basically just the day shift that I've approached. We still have two other shifts that we need to inform more widely about the opportunity to voice their concern for the approval of this bill. But as of today, I will submit to you 597 signatures. And thank you for introducing the bill, Senator Rodriguez. And I thank you all for your support of our hospital and our hard-working employees at GMH. Sides to the mercy.
Just for the rest of the employees, we'll keep the record open for at least 10 days. So, you can continue to collect signatures. And if you want to augment that list, send it in.
Yes, we will.
And any other employee at the hospital who wishes to submit testimony can do so by sending testimony to senator@senatorbjcruz.com. Or they can send it to 155 Hessler Street, Hessler Place, Agonya, Guam, 96910. Or they can fax it to 477-2522. All right? And so, you can continue for at least the next 10 days. We'll keep it open so that you can all submit additional testimony, additional names, whichever, on this. I have two other people that signed up. Belle and Percy? No? Or any other employee wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Senators.
Good.
What I'm going to say, testimony of what I'm going to say regarding this bill, it's the same as what was said by Mr. Ulrich and June Perez. So, in the interest of time, it's just the same. Thank you.
No problem. We appreciate the fact that you came down and on both bills. But if you wish to submit something in writing, you may do so at either one. It's open to all the employees, too. All right? Anybody have any questions or anybody?
And Mr. Chair, if I could as well, just for Mr. Ulrich, just for the record. On the three years the Board had approved for merit bonuses, has that been paid fully to the employees?
Yes. When we made the payment in November 14th, we did pay all of the merit pay for the employees for those three years. And also, going forward, as of July 18th of 2013, we immediately lifted the freeze that had been there. And so, all the employees have been not only receiving the increased wages since July 18th, but also, if they have earned merit pay through the evaluation process, those merit pay, those merit bonuses have been paid subsequent to July 2013. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to preface the comment before I ask a question of Mr. Ulrich, and feel free to interrupt me if I'm wrong. In memorializing the budget process that we went through, because when we got the audience of the employees here and certainly the 500 and some, I'm sure more signatures to come, I really appreciate being active and letting us understand your views on this issue. I want to be clear, as I said, so that there's a clear understanding. These are not new employees in the $3,777,000 and X amount of dollars that was in the budget. These represent budgeted vacancies that were reduced from the aforementioned in the bill agencies and departments. So, we, I don't, I'm not one to want to pit employees against each other. Okay? I'm one that will be interested in providing solutions. And so, I want to be clear that those are budgeted vacancies that are in critical agencies, much like yourself and other agencies in the government of Guam. So, moving forward and looking at this piece of legislation and understanding the intent, Mr. Ulrich, I would just ask basically two questions. At some point, and I appreciate the dialogue we've been having, I really appreciate Joe's presentation today and your presentation in terms of the amount of back and forth that's going on with the administration. To be clear, is this budgeted amount required because there is not, or there has not been a representation in terms of the remittances to GMH to cover this obligation? Either it has been remitted or, and used for other purposes because you needed it, or is this a funding source that's simply not identified at this time?
Thank you, Senator. Let me preface my response.
Thank you.
By making another comment. I know that the first paragraph of the law, the bill, the proposed bill, addresses the $1.5 million for the hospital for the outstanding increment from 2013.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that. The second part of the bill identifies dollars coming from another source, whatever that source is. And I have not, and I don't believe Mr. Verga has reviewed anything to know where those vacancies are, whether they're from GMH or from other agencies. So, I can't really comment on budgeted vacancies, whether they're, whatever the source is. But certainly, from our standpoint, when we built the budget, we built the budget with vacancies that were needed to provide the valuable, invaluable clinical and administrative services at the hospitals. But once again, I can't comment or make any make any comment relative to the sourcing of the $1.5 million. Relative to your question, which is what sourcing have we received? We did receive $1.8 million from the government of Guam August of 2013 in payment of obligations that we had incurred. And that $1.8 million was used in two ways. The first was used to fund the merit pay and the payment of the wages from fiscal 2012. And the balance of those funds were used to pay the offset, the increased cost of the increment. But we made, because of the additional cost of about $125,000 per payroll, which we could not finance, but we had that $1.8 million received from Adaluc DOA, which we used not only for partial funding of the November payment, but also ongoing. And so, that total of $1.8 million has been totally exhausted.
So, your on-the-record statement today is you need this appropriation in order to fulfill that obligation?
That is correct, because as we have discussed in previous presentations, that we are cash-strapped and our expenditures do exceed the cash flow. And so, this $1.5 million is necessary because it is an obligation that is now over a year old. And the employees have asked, you know, as to how we're going to find it, finance it. And of course, ascertifying authority for GMH, I have to say, well, we can't, since we can't fund it, we have it as a liability in our financial statements, but we cannot fund it.
Okay. So, I would make two closing statements then. In order for everybody to be clear and understand, because I have not been disputed as of yet, our brothers and sisters at BBMR, DOA, DRT, DOL, Agriculture, Behavioral Wellness, and DPR are identified and have been identified and went through the budget process as being budgeted vacancies, which were reinstated. So, I will say this for the record, that you have put it on the record that you need this appropriation. My suggestion going forward is, as we know during the, and that's the budgeted vacancies. I know you can't speak to that, Alan, but it's the same staffing pattern that you have at the hospital. When you have budgeted vacancies, you have a full expectation of being able to hire and secure that workforce for your operation. But you also have an understanding as a CEO and as a budget guy, that that is not going to be a reality throughout a 12-month period. There is going to be times when those budgeted vacancies are going to take four to five months to hire, which means you will incur a lapsed-forward funding source. So, what I would suggest we move forward to and put on the record, at least with the chairman, is we could perhaps change the language here to an authorization, and you and the administration could work this out. Because not one senator on the floor has ever had, ever had any desire to not fund and fully make whole the hospital. It was how were we going to get there to make sure that these other folks, which are family, friends, and acquaintances within our community, that we weren't going to, you know, say one was more a priority than the other. So, now that I have a full understanding, we need to make you whole. This could possibly be a legislation that gives authorization and then allows for that $11 million transfer authority that was discussed earlier to be negotiated between you and the front office. And maybe through this legislation, at least you have the teeth to say, this has got to be done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Snicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Alan.
Good afternoon.
I wanted to thank the Chair of Health, Senator Rodriguez, for introducing this bill. I think that it's a very appropriate bill. And basically, just to clarify, what he's intending to do of this bill is, there's vacancies in various agencies that have not been filled. And what he's, and the budget that we passed was intending to hire to fill these vacancies. But what Senator Rodriguez is intending to do is, he's saying, before we hire, let's make sure that everybody who we owe gets paid first. And that makes perfect sense to me. I'm very much in support of it. My question that I wanted to ask was, because this goes to paying the retro pay that is owed, I have two questions. My first is, do you, does this amount include the retirement fund contribution that the hospital is also going to have to make?
Yes.
With respect to these increments?
That is true.
Okay. And my second question is, these increments are basically going to adjust pay levels up. Does your current budget include those higher adjusted pay scales?
Correct. Now, as I mentioned in the earlier testimony, that we did implement the increased rate.
Okay.
Hourly rate as of July 18th.
Okay.
So, since July 18th, we have been absorbing and paying the additional costs from where the frozen rate is to what the new one, so we are, we are there. And we have been paying that from operations, from operating cash.
Okay.
So, this is, and I do want to clarify once again. If, when I talk to our Director of Nursing, and I would say that I took 40 nurses away from her budget because they're budgeted but vacant, she would have my head on a platter. And.
GMH is not on the list.
I know that. I understand that. But there might be, there might be others out there. And I just want to mention that, you know, and I appreciate the spirit of the bill. But certainly, and certainly, we want to reward the hospital's employees for these overdue funds. But I am, I don't know what those budgeted vacancies are that other agencies have requested. So, I'm very sensitive to that. But, you know, yes, the, our employees have been paid at the new rate. Thank you.
No, I understand. For me, the only concern I would probably like to ask the Chair to clear up is what vacancies in the Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is being affected. But everywhere else is not related to health, education, or public safety. It's BBMR, Department of Administration, Rev and Tax, Department of Labor, Agriculture, and Department of Parks and Recreation. Don't get me wrong, I'm sure they all have, you know, needs that need to be met. But as far as I'm concerned, health, education, and public safety, I mean, it's always the mantra for us whenever we talk about what our priorities are. And so, when it comes to funding outstanding obligations due to the hospital, with the exception of behavioral health and wellness, none of these other agencies actually are directly involved in health, education, and public safety. So, the reason why I like this bill and the reason why I can get behind it, with the exception of behavioral health, which we need to reconcile, is this does put priority to the existing and already working employees at the Guam Memorial Hospital. And we're basically saying, before we hire more outside of health, education, and public safety, let's make sure we're making whole in health, education, and public safety, with particular respect to the Guam Memorial Hospital. So, I just wanted to thank the Chair for introducing this and thank you for clarifying those questions that I had, because I was just concerned that it wasn't included in the 2015 budget. But now that you've reassured me that it is, I'm very comfortable with this legislation.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other Senator? If not, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And thank you to Senators Snicholas for clarifying some of the statements that were made earlier. And I was going to take the opportunity now in the closing to just, you know, make it clear that, of course, you know, I would never, and this bill does not pit employees against employees. This, you know, this bill here talks about taking money out of a fund to hire new employees. So, this is not new employees. These are vacancies in these departments. And, you know, the beauty of Governor Guam employees is that, I tell you, day in and day out, they do more with less. Our, these departments that this fund or this section is set out to fund for new hires have been operating. And, you know, I'm not saying they don't need extra help and extra resources, but they, you know, our people there are doing so much with so less. And they're going to continue to do that, you know? And so, this is never about, you know, pitting employees against each other. And I know with the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, we've also, this new budget that was passed, had increased their budget, their budget numbers. And so, if there's any concern in terms of what, you know, what that department would be, would be needing, you know, we didn't take the whole $3 million from this. There's still that $1.5. So, if you told us. No, but so if you told us that you didn't pay the merit bonuses, then we'll gladly amend it, too. But since you paid it, then we're leaving that. And so, that's, I think that's a real good compromise, you know, in terms of ensuring that we still be able to help these other agencies and departments. So, again, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much. The committee will consider Bill 396 as having been heard. The committee will continue with this, its public hearing. We have one confirmation, the nomination of Ms. Camia R. Durking to the Board of Equalization. There you go.
Good afternoon, Senators. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm coming today to seek your, to seek testimony so that I could be nominated to the Board of Equalization. I come from a family who has a long tradition of public service. And really, when presented with this opportunity, I looked at it as a way for me to give back to the island that I love. This is actually would be my very first opportunity to sit on any kind of board. If you look through my resume, you'll see that I don't have any kind of accounting or tax or real estate background. But what I can tell you right now is that I do bring a fresh perspective. I have a commitment to learning new things. I know that with the Board of Equalization, I'm going to be presented with different, different, I'll be presented with different challenges where I will probably be asked to make decisions that are probably going to be unfavorable or unpopular. But I think based on that, I can, I can still look at it and provide a critical view and not be unwavering in my decision. So, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak in front of you.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve on this board. Are you aware of how busy you're going to be in the next month with this board? I mean, not even taking account of your own personal situation. But as I understand it from the chairman of Rev and Tax, Rev and Tax has told us that the new appraisals should have been completed last month. This Board of Equalization is supposed to be meeting this month, the next month, to be approving the appraisals. And by November, they're supposed to have recommendations on what the new tax base is going to be for everybody's piece of property on this island. And unless, I'm just wondering whether or not you're up to that for the next, next couple of months? Because it's going to be really rough. Well, I mean, if they keep to what they told the chairman, they are going to get out the new bill, the new tax bill by November. He and I both, well, I won't speak for him. I'm very skeptical that they'll do it. But I'm just, I'm just telling you that they've told us that they were going to have the appraisals done. I'm not sure if it's done, but there was, it was supposed to be before the Board this month and next month, because Rev and Tax wants the bills out by the 1st of November. So, I just, but if you're willing to do it, please. I mean, because it really only takes common sense. I remember going through it, and I tried to explain to Board of Equalization at one point, how could my piece of property, yes, on a cliff line, be as much, valued as much when it's surrounded by two Kaiser boxes, equal to two houses a mile up the road, again, on the cliff line, but every house within, you know, the five or 10 acres there were all million-dollar mansions. But the underlying property was valued the same, and they couldn't explain it to me. But I'm sure with your education from UA and the years that you've had at GTA, that you'd be able to answer those questions and at least explain to the taxpayer what the problem is. But I know your family, and I know you have to be very bright to be their kid.
Thank you. Well, I think, I definitely see it will be, it's going to be a challenge. But I also know that I have a very supportive family who can help if, you know, if there's anything that needs to be done or taken care of in the next couple of months. I think they're all available to assist, so I can make sure I'm in attendance at all the meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All of that aside, thank you for your willingness to serve. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate, just, all things being equal, this is going to be a very challenging board over the next 12 months. As the Vice Speaker mentioned, they're going through the revaluations. What's going to happen is property values are probably going to most likely be adjusted upwards. And a lot of, a lot of people are going to want to go to, before the Board of Equalization to make claims for having their property not be adjusted upwards. That's going to be the natural course of things. It's going to get very, very, very hectic. And I have no doubt that you're up to the challenge. I just want to make sure that I'm being fair in disclosing how challenging it's going to be. I would, I would be very hesitant to take a seat on this board because it's of the demands. But it, not only because of the workload, but because it's going to be an unpopular workload. I don't think anyone's going to come wanting to see you guys saying that they're happy their property values went up and their tax base is increasing. There's going to be a lot of issues that the Board is going to be faced with, There's going to be a lot of issues that the board is going to be faced with, and a lot of people who are going to want a lower tax rate, and it's going to be your responsibility along with the other members of the board to be able to navigate that. And I'm not talking about dozens, I'm talking about maybe hundreds or even thousands. So, that's just the reality I wanted to share with you. But I really do think you're up for the job. I was just looking through your, your background here, and it shows a very rapid progression in GTA. You came in, and as soon as you had your foot in the door with regards to management in January of 2011, you've quickly accelerated to the position of senior manager. So, that's a strong testament to not only your work ethic, but your intelligence and your ability to deliver and to effectively make decisions and determinations. So, I think you'll be a tremendous asset to the people of Guam and to the board. I just want to be fair to you as well and let you know that there's a lot of boards, and this one is going to be a very, very challenging one for anybody. But I, if you're, if you're up for it, I, you have my full support, and I think you'll be an excellent addition.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say congratulations, and I, I know, I haven't seen you in a while, but I, you know, you come from a wonderful family, and I do miss working with your wonderful mother, who taught me a lot as well. And actually, I always considered her my boss when I was at VSP. But I want to wish you the best, and thank you for stepping up and taking on this opportunity to help our island. And you have my full support, and as Senator Snicholas stated here, I believe there's a lot here that is said in your packet that would allow for you to provide quality service at the support. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and the confirmation of Ms. Durking is considered heard, and this committee stands adjourned.
Thank you very much.
So, that's what you were saying about being...